Join me for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, help us tonight to be slow to anger, just like you. Teach us to be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to get angry, just as in your word instructs. Fill our hearts with grace and understandings that I may respond to situations with patience and compassion, rather than anger. Forgive me for the times my anger has hurt others and distance me from you. Help me release my anger and trust in your wisdom and in your guidance. In Jesus' name, amen. Approval of the agenda?
Motion that we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second it.
All right, Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weisenhut?
Yes. Approval of the minutes from 3:31:25?
A motion, we approve the minutes from 3:31:25.
I'll second it.
Weisenhut?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda, approval of the 4/11/25 accounts payable totaling $308,360.48. The February financials and the tax roll corrections.
A motion, we approve the consent agenda items A through C.
I'll second it. Any further discussion, anything you want to talk about on it?
No.
Okay.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weisenhut?
Yes. Okay. Southeast Kansas Health Department 2026 budget request. Ms. Rebecca Johnson? We'd like you to sit up here and join the table.
It's a lot less intimidating, honestly. Do you want me up here on this?
Yep.
I guess, okay. Is it on?
Is the red light on?
Yeah, I believe you're good to go.
All right.
And I don't know if you all, did you get a, did you get this printout?
Uh, it was in the email, I did.
I'm gonna give it to you again.
Yeah, just give us the printout so we can, so we can follow along with you here.
There you go, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you for having me and good evening, commissioners. I'm Becky Johnson, the administrator of the SCK Multi-County Health Department and the Bourbon County Local Health Officer. I'm here this evening to present our annual funding request and I've also included a shortened version of our annual report for you, for you to review. And as you know, one of the primary responsibilities of the Bourbon County Commission is to enact local legislation that protects, promotes, and preserves the health, safety, and prosperity of our citizens. And this duty aligns directly with the work we do every day at the Health Department, from disease prevention and maternal-child health to emergency preparedness and health education. And we are respectfully requesting a 3% increase in funding for the upcoming year to account for inflation and rising operational costs. This request reflects the standard cost of living adjustment acknowledging the continued rise in the cost of goods and services. Our last funding increase was in 2021. And since then, we've absorbed increased costs in staffing, medical supplies, fuels, and overall service delivery. And this modest increase is not just about keeping up, it's about continuing to show up for our communities with the same quality, consistency, and care that they've come to expect. Your support allows us to protect the health and safety of Bourbon County residents, to respond to emergencies, and provide critical services that improve lives every day. And we appreciate your partnership in this mission and I'd be happy to help answer any questions you may have. And I thank you for your time and your trust and your continued commitment to the well-being of our county. And in the annual report, I've got my information on the front page. And then your second page is a list of disease investigations or a number count that we did this year was 362. We provided 795 immunizations and we had 3,750 WIC appointments. And WIC is Women, Infants, and Children, that's a nutritional program. And that's up to children, prenatal and postpartum women and children up to the age of five. We provided 140 home visits and your home visiting service is the best in the state of Kansas. So, we just got a report from KDHE on that, so I'm pretty proud to tell you that. We engaged 1,349 individuals through outreach. And other services we provided, we had a count of 496. We have a new project this year and we started it, I believe in August, was, in 2024. We have a breast milk donor depot now. And so, women who are breastfeeding, who have an abundance of breast milk or even ones that may have lost an infant who would like to donate, can do this. And they contact the milk depot and then work through us. They bring their frozen breast milk to us and we take it to our freezer and we send it off to the milk depot, which also sends it to, or they screen it and then they send it to delivering hospitals in our region. We have done a tick disease prevention project, Bourbon County. I'm sure all of you probably know by now, somebody who has Alpha-Gal Syndrome. That's, you know, that's a pretty, pretty, pretty bad deal and there's, they're still learning so, so much about that. So, we're working, working on that and, you know, other diseases, tick-related, tick-borne diseases. Upcoming projects. We are trying to look to save you some money. We do try to do, try to apply for as many grants as we can through KDHE or other, you know, philanthropic or private organizations. We have secured a grant through KDHE for safe sleep baby showers. And so, we will be providing the county with a baby shower in June, I believe. And we have safe sleep trainers that work with families to provide them education on safe sleep to help prevent infant death. And so, like SIDS or unexplained deaths. And so, they provide that and they get a pack and play. We've even had some parents come to us before that have been having their baby sleep in a tote. So, this is, you know, this is very, very important stuff. We also have car seat safety trainers. And we provide car seat safety lanes and check lanes. And we have gotten a grant that pays for car seats for children. So, we're working on that as well. And we have a breastfeeding coalition. And since September, our membership has more than quadrupled. So, we're pretty proud of that. And we have annual work plan we do with that. And I hope maybe the next time I see you, I'll be able to tell you some projects that we've successfully implemented. We're getting pretty far along on some of them. So, my funding request for the year is $93,473. You have any questions for me? I brought our brochures just in case. I know I've seen you recently or not, well, it's been a little while back at Mapleton, but I have a list of our services if you'd like those too. I think I've probably given to you, but yeah, if you guys want those, just as a reminder. This is what all we do. We are, we're busy people over there and we've, we're always trying to find new ways to help sort of the community. And we've made a lot of new partners, it seems like, over the year, so.
All right.
You have anything, any questions for me or anything you think of?
I don't at this time. I mean, I'll look over everything and we'll...
We're just getting ready to start into our budget season, so good time to come.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Old business. Hay bid letter from Pat Murphy, do we have that?
Yes, so Pat Murphy contacted Susan, stated he was an over-the-top driver that missed the bid. She suggested him writing a letter and then you can decide if you, what you want to do from there.
Memory serves right, that's what he's paid for his last couple of years, isn't it?
I don't know, I didn't open the letter. How much was it?
$200.
Around there, yes.
I mean, we either let him do it or we...
I make a motion that we accept the bid from Pat Murphy for Native Road, the old dump site, for $200 to hay.
I will second it.
All right. Weisenhut?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Letters of interest in the zoning committee.
Okay, I haven't got through all of them yet. Want to just read them? Does that kosher, read them out there?
I would say maybe just state the names of who's interested.
Okay.
I don't know, so the content of the letters is...
Okay. All right, so I'll just start off here at the top of the stack. Mike Houston. Doesn't say, is he here? Mike here?
I believe he's on duty, actually.
Okay. Do we know what district he lives in?
Uh, one.
One?
Yeah.
Okay. Jill Franklin in number one. Pete Owen B. Number one? Number one? Yeah. James Banward. District one. Mary Pemberton. District one, future district two. Brent Smith. District one. Morgan Mitchell. Not sure what district. Tim Emerson.
District one.
I've seen that.
Brent, are you, are you, will you still be in District one after the...
I'll be in District two after the, after the break.
Okay. After the birth of the year.
Brian Wade. Old District three, new District five. Jason Yount. Not sure. Bill Laumann or Laumann? District one. Well-represented. Laura Crom, District two.
Laura who?
Crom.
Was she three?
Uh, no, she's District two.
I don't know what new district it ends up being. Christine. I'm gonna mispronounce this, Farball. And I apologize for that, I don't know a district. Amanda L. Spicer. Brian's, Brian Ashworth II. Clinton Walker.
And I believe Mr. Walker will stay in District one, correct?
Right.
And did they, I don't know. I had one that was sent to me and I forwarded it on to the clerk, Samuel Tran. We didn't get that email, I guess.
I do not know what she provided was in your...
Okay. Oh.
You said Samuel Tran?
Uh-huh.
You said Samuel Tran sent you in?
Yeah. Okay, before we...
First thing, the first thing we need to know is how many people do you want on your board?
Okay, that's what I was getting ready, my board? I like that.
Well, you're the one that volunteered to meet with them every time they want to meet, so.
All right. So... I... I want to read this before we make our decisions and then I'll answer those questions. This is bylaws for zoning advisory committee. Article one, name. The name of the organization shall be the Bourbon County Zoning Advisory Committee, hereafter Advisory Committee. Article two, purpose. The purpose of the advisory committee shall be to assist the Board of County Commissioners in developing a zoning resolution that defines the types of compatible land uses, maintains community character, and creates future growth and development. The purpose of the advisory committee is to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners in developing a resolution in accordance with Kansas statutes on zoning founded in KSA 19-2960, county zoning regulations, and further outlined in Kansas statutes found in Chapter 12, Article 7, notably 12-741, authority. 12-753, purpose. 12-756, process. And 12-756A, planning commission. 12-5756B, special use and conditions. 12-760, enforcement. And additionally, 12-715, limitations and exemptions. Article three, appointment and membership. The advisory committee members shall be by letters of interest. The advisory committee will be selected by the Board of County Commissioners. The advisory committee shall consist of one commissioner and one representative from each of the newly formed five commission districts. In lieu of representation from each commission districts, the advisory committee shall consist of five members selected from letters submitted. The Board of County Commissioners can increase the number of members of the advisory board, advisory committee, not to exceed seven members. Article four, officers. Executive Director will be, will be held by the County Commissioner. This role is to provide the advisory committee with direction and resources necessary to research and formulate recommendations necessary to achieve their purpose. Chairperson is selected by members of the advisory committee. The chairperson's role is to carry out the order of business, assign tasks to members, and ensure deadlines are met. The chairperson will make the final presentation of recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. Advisory Committee Secretary is selected by members to record minutes and prepare reports to be submitted to the Board of Commissioners. The advisory committee may select additional copositions as necessary to divide work and cover the event of absences. Article five, durations and meetings. Once assigned, the advisory committee will meet once a week for five weeks. The first meeting will be set for Thursday, April 17, 2025, at 5:00 PM in the commission room at the Bourbon County Courthouse. Future dates will be set by the advisory committee at the first meeting. The duration of five weeks may be extended by the Board of County Commissioners. Special meetings may be called by the advisory committee chairperson at such times as are found necessary. The advisory committee meetings are open to the public. However, advisory committee meetings are not a public forum and public participation will not be allowed. Article six, order of business. The order of business of an advisory committee meetings are as follows. Call to order, pledge allegiance to the flag, prayer, approval of minutes, old business, new business, open session, and adjournment. Quorum, Article seven. The advisory meeting shall consist of the executive director or the, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. The quorum for the meeting of the advisory committee shall consist of the, of the executive director or the chairperson and at least three additional committee members. Dissolution, Article eight. The advisory committee chairman will present recommendations as an agenda item on the May 19, 2025 scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The dissolution of the advisory committee will commence at the conclusion of the presentation. Bylaw amendments, Article nine. After notice to the membership, the members of the advisory committee may amend or revoke these bylaws at any regular or special meeting duly convened. So, that just, we can go up to seven if you, with 14 people, I would, I would recommend seven. Seven choices. Want to take a couple of minutes? And I would also say that since we didn't have a representation of all five of those districts, that we just picked seven. It seems like District one's been well-represented.
What happens when that's where everything's happening?
Huh? That's where everything happens? Yeah.
All right, what you got?
You want to relook at mine and I'll look at yours? Or you want to just read out what you got and I'll read out what I got? How you want to do this?
Oh, here, I might have skipped that one.
Huh?
I accidentally skipped that one over here. Guess I should have double-checked to make sure that...
So, you had this one?
Two of them the same?
Yeah.
So, neither of the two are the same.
Right. So, you want to keep them two?
Yeah, I have, I'm fine with those two.
All right. And then you hang on to your copies.
Okay.
So, then... I guess we'll go back through.
Um, no, I'm gonna do these.
You got the ones that I handed you?
Yeah.
Okay, I got the ones you handed me. I'll take, I'll accept that one.
Okay. Okay. I will, how many more we need? We got three, we need four?
We need four more, yeah.
I'm okay with these two.
You're okay with them two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, we're staying at nine.
I would have done all fourteen if it, or, however many.
Yeah, I think there was fourteen sent to us.
Seventeen, I would have done, I mean, I was glad to see that many people want to be involved in this, so...
So, those are your nine people. So...
You need to move to a point then?
So, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that these nine people named in the meeting today are the, uh, zoning information, uh, and advisory board. Um, the only rule, I guess, in the bylaws has changed, is there's now nine instead of seven, so...
And that the board, or that the committee will adopt the bylaws, their own bylaws.
All right.
I have a motion to have seconded.
I second that motion.
Your boroughs?
Yes.
Ways and Hints?
Yes.
Your first meeting's just Thursday at five?
Yeah. Thursday at five.
Thursday at five, right here.
You're going to be here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going to get hold of them, or is the clerk?
I will have the clerk emailing.
Okay. Yeah. You get it rolling?
We need to restate your form?
Huh?
Will you need to restate your form?
There you go, Jennifer.
Instead of only three?
Yeah, maybe. They could do that.
Okay. Be a big table.
Lots of pizza.
Lots of pizza.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
Sure, Slim Jim. No, go ahead.
Okay. Public comments for items not on the agenda. We have Kevin Schaefer, progress on upgrading the septic code to include soil test.
Not sure how, do you want to just speak to that, or?
Come on up and...
Well, it's been a, a four-year ordeal, so that was with the previous commissioners, so I have talked to David, uh, starting fresh, probably going to be starting all over again here, but, so my request is basic, what I said there is, uh, Bourbon County does not require a soil test, you know, to see if the soil's adequate for a septic system. They did prior to, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, roughly, I think nineteen ninety-eight, they changed the code and dropped it.
Do we know why?
No, I don't. I, I've just found that out, that that's kind of, um, I have some reason. I mean, I, that's why I could talk to you, I said at the bottom of my card, I could talk to you guys in a further meeting, tell you more details. I, I have more details than what I told David, prior to him being elected, as hoping he could move forward with it. I was, got a lot of resistance from the former commissioners, and it's a safety issue. Uh, I mean, septic systems are designed to be, to do a process of, as we all know, and if they don't work, they don't work, and, uh, right now, there's no soil test required in Bourbon County, so I, I'm a retired civil engineer, you're going to have to convince me how you can, it's just guesswork right now going on. So I think that needs to be changed, in my opinion. So, uh, I'm hoping you guys can help me with it. I've got some ideas, I'll be glad to talk to you later, I don't want to bore all these folks with that. It's not a fun topic, but, that's, that's, that was my request, so. Wasn't really prepared, I wasn't sure what was going on with the new form.
We, uh...
Sorry.
Oh, why don't we interrupt you? Did we, uh...
No, I'm done.
And you said we quit making them have one in ninety-eight, ninety-nine?
Uh, Kansas, Kansas put out a, I'll say a law or mandate in January the first of nineteen ninety-nine, if a county did not have a code in place, then they would give them the minimum code. Because there was a few counties just doing, you know, wab-wab west, whatever.
Right.
So they wanted to corral it. Now, the mistake they said, and they actually said this to me, I can get the guy's name to, and tell you his, his estate representative, said there was a loophole. They didn't tell them what the, the code needed to have as a minimum. So Bourbon County, in October of nineteen eighty, or ninety-eight, two months, three months prior to the deadline, dropped it and had a minimum code that, I've had four state representatives tell me that was, wow, that's fake, and it's only a page and a half, so it's easy read. It does not require any soil testing. Uh, and that's just, I don't know how you do it, every county in the, in the country requires...
So the state doesn't even require soil testing for?
The state hasn't, no, the state, it's the county's prerogative. I've talked to the state, it's up to the county. That's the loophole. Right now, they're trying to change it. I can tell you, gentleman told me he was working on trying to change it, but that's been three years ago. He doesn't work there anymore. Um, I don't want, I don't want to tell people's names here without, uh, properly, but, yeah. Um, so anyway, that's the state's position, it's the county's, it's up to the county. I've called to the Chanute, Department of Kansas, Department of Health, they tell me that. I've told David that, I just kind of, I'm kind of stuck with you guys. No disrespect there, but I mean, it's up to the commissioners here to, to, uh, to enforce the code.
And, uh, yeah, and, and on some of your issues, well, I'd already spoke with, with Public Works and them about that, so, so, uh, we were looking into some of that, some of that issue, on this still here, yeah, I, I would say that we probably do re, uh, need to sit down with, uh, with, uh, I guess it's Matt Quick that does that?
Yes.
And revisit that, that, uh, code and see where...
Yeah, we've had some conver, he was in conversations with their, uh, commissioners and with, uh, Mr. Meeks, so that was, uh, that's still a while there a bit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate you guys.
Okay. Mr. Brent Smith?
Good afternoon, gentlemen, Brent Smith from Redfield, Kansas. First, uh, I wanted to thank David Beerbauer for showing up at the chamber event last Wednesday and, and getting before the community and discussing things going on with the county. I think that was pretty pivotal of him, and, uh, was, was much needed. Uh, secondly, I'd like to, uh, commend you gentlemen for your, for, for your actions last, uh, Monday night in your commission meeting, of when we had citizens come forth and, uh, addressed you with their concerns or anything like that, and, because in the past, we'd have to sit and watch a guy wrestle in his chair, roll his eyes back in his head, and then, um, want to contest and fight with people that would approach him. You guys have done this in a professional manner, and I hope it stands up the rest of the way. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Ann Dare?
Oh, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I have just recently become a part of a nor, new organization in town called Path Way of Ease, Path of Ease, Path of Ease. It's a transitional housing, um, for women, um, coming out of addiction. Um, I, um, on their list of needs was, uh, med boxes, and because of the hospital equipment, um, I came to ask to see if we could look at the stuff, and they would need to have locks, of course, or, and, and keys, if the keys are missing, then they won't be of any use, so what is the process, or is there a process, or, uh, is this allowable, um, for, um, me and the director to go with somebody? Uh, I guess they need permission first.
We did that recently.
No, I'm not, no.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying is that, I, I don't have, I mean, we have talked about it briefly, and, and, I'm not opposed to, uh, to doing that, I don't, I'm not sure when the sale is set, and if that other company is alre, if the auction company's already looked at the, the...
Uh, yeah, we'll have to, uh, we'll have to make some phone calls and some contacts and see if we've set up the online auction yet.
Okay.
Um, once they take their pictures and get it set, then our hands are kind of tied.
I, I understand.
Um, but, if you're in time, then we will see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Michael Hoyt?
We can fight now.
We can fight now?
Yes.
It's been a minute, I'm good for it.
As you all know, I have, uh, kind of tried to fill everyone in that giving assistance to veterans and, and being an advocate for benefits has been difficult since, really, November of last year. Uh, ordinarily, I would go down to, uh, where I worked before, and I have, still have a home in Phoenix, so I go down to check on that. Uh, I went down there this, past January, and to discover that any other time, I would take all of my client files with me, and they would go through them all with me, and we'd get them all taken care of. Now they would only take one. So it's, it really shut me down. Since the probationary folks have been terminated, first they were sent home on temporary leave, and I haven't really heard from too many of them since, but I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, this week, or, or actually next week, on April the twenty-second and twenty-third, between nine AM and six PM in Kansas City, the Missouri and Kansas Benefit, VBA offices will be in Kansas City, Kansas, at the Veterans Memorial Hall, to work with anybody to get your c, claim input information, they'll probably have computers. We always did when I worked for them, we did remote, we had complete computers, we could input the information directly. So I'll leave those out there, and I encourage everybody, uh, it's still, if you call one eight hundred eight two seven one thousand, you'll die on hold.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Michael Walden?
I've got some ideas, I'll be glad to talk to you later, I don't wanna bore all these folks with that. It's not a fun topic, but...that was my request, so. Wasn't really prepared, I wasn't sure what was going on with the new form.
We, uh...
Sorry.
Oh, why don't we interrupt you? Did we, uh...
No, done.
And you said we quit, making them have one in 98, 99?
Kansas put out a, I'll say, a law or mandate in January the first of 1999, if a county did not have a code in place, then they would give them the minimum code. Because there was a few counties just doing, you know, wauwauw west, whatever.
Right.
So they wanted to corral it. Now, the mistake they said, and they actually said this to me, I can get the guy's name to tell you, is a state representative said there was a loophole. They didn't tell them what the code needed to have as a minimum. So Bourbon County, in October of 1980, or 98, two months, three months prior to the deadline, dropped it and had a minimum code that, I've had four state representatives tell me that was, wow, that's fake, and it's only a page and a half, so it's easy read. It does not require any soil testing. And that's just, I don't know how you do it, every county in the, in the country requires...
So the state doesn't even require soil testing for it?
The state hasn't, no, the state, it's the county's prerogative. I've talked to the state, it's up to the county. That's the loophole. Right now, they're trying to change it. I can tell you, gentleman told me he was working on trying to change it, but that's been three years ago. He doesn't work there anymore. I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell people's names here without proper, but, yeah. So anyway, that's the state's position, it's the county's, it's up to the county. I've called to the Chanute Department, Kansas Department of Health, they tell me that. I've told David that, I just kinda, I'm kinda stuck with you guys. No disrespect there, but I mean, it's up to the commissioners here to, to enforce the code.
And on some of your issues, I'd already spoke with Public Works and them about that, so, so we were looking into some of that, some of that issue, on this still here, yeah, I would say that we probably do need to sit down with, with, I guess it's Matt Quick that does that?
Yes.
And revisit that, that code and see where...
Yeah, we've had some conver, he was in conversations with their commissioners and with Mr. Meeks, so that was, that's still involved there a bit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate you guys.
Okay. Mr. Brent Smith?
Good afternoon, gentlemen, Brent Smith from Redfield, Kansas. First, I wanted to thank David Beerbauer for showing up for the chamber event last Wednesday, and getting before the community, and discussing things going on with the county. I think that was pretty pivotal, and was much needed. Secondly, I'd like to commend you, gentlemen, for your, for your actions last Monday night in your commission meeting, of when we had citizens come forth and addressed you with their concerns or anything like that, and, because in the past, we'd have to sit and watch a guy wrestle in his chair, roll his eyes back in his head, and then wanna contest and fight with people that would approach him. You guys have done this in a professional manner, and I hope it stands up the rest of the way. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ann Dare?
Oh, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I have just recently become a part of a new organization in town called Pathway of Ease, Path of Ease, Path of Ease. It's a transitional housing for women coming out of addiction. On their list of needs was med boxes, and because of the hospital equipment, I came to ask to see if we could look at the stuff, and they would need to have locks, of course, or, and keys, if the keys are missing, then they won't be of any use. So what is the process, or is there a process, or is this allowable for me and the director to go with somebody? I guess they need permission first.
We did that recently.
No, I'm not, no.
Yeah, I'm just saying is that, I don't have, I mean, we have talked about it briefly, and...
Yeah, briefly.
And I'm not opposed to, to doing that. I'm not sure when the sale is set, and if that other company is, if the auction company's already looked at the...
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to make some phone calls and some contacts and see if we've set up the online auction yet.
Okay.
Once they take their pictures and get it set, then our hands are kinda tied.
I understand.
But if you're in time, then we will see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Michael Hoyt?
We can fight now.
We can fight now?
Yes.
It's been a minute, I'm good for it.
As you all know, I have kind of tried to fill everyone in that giving assistance to veterans and being an advocate for benefits has been difficult since, really, November of last year. Ordinarily, I would go down to where I worked before, and I have, still have a home in Phoenix, so I go down to check on that. I went down there this, past January, and to discover that any other time, I would take all of my client files with me, and they would go through them all with me, and we'd get them all taken care of. Now they would only take one. So it really shut me down. Since the probationary folks have been terminated, first, they were sent home on temporary leave, and I haven't really heard from too many of them since. But I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, this week, or actually next week, on April the 22nd and 23rd, between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM in Kansas City, the Missouri and Kansas VBA offices will be in Kansas City, Kansas, at the Veterans Memorial Hall, to work with anybody to get your claim input information. They'll probably have computers. We always did when I worked for them, we did remote, we had complete computers, we could input the information directly. So I'll leave those out there, and I encourage everybody, it's still, if you call 1-800-827-1000, you'll die on hold.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Michael Walden?
Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Michael Walden, I'm the director of the Juvenile Detention Center in Auburn Girard, Kansas, which Bourbon County is a part owner of. And I just wanted to come and meet your acquaintance tonight, let you know where we were, what we were doing. April 23rd, we do have a board of director meeting. I believe Commissioner Beerbauer has been appointed to our board of directors, and wanted to make sure that you had a formal invitation. We do, we do discuss quite a bit of things in relationship to juvenile detention, and some of the changes in legislation that's coming down. And right now, I met with Senator Schallenberger last week, and there is some legislation that is going to potentially increase the number of kids coming to detention, which I think we're equipped and ready to do and handle. But wanted to offer a tour for any member of the commission, or anyone from Bourbon County that'd like to come down and see what, what's there. Again, you guys are part of an interlocal, you own part of that. You have, oh goodness, I would say roughly, I don't have any figures, but just north of $300,000 worth of investment for Bourbon County down there. And again, I know it's not physically in Bourbon County, but we're just a part of Bourbon County as we are Neosho or any other county. So I would encourage you guys to come down and see us and visit with us, and if there's anything I can do, please let me know. I work for you guys, so I'll come and do whatever I need to do, be with you, however, whenever you need me. Phone number to reach me is 620-724-4174, that's our facility number. Just ask for me, they'll, they'll grab me.
All right.
If there's anything else you need from me, just please let me know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you folks, thank you.
Okay. New business. Letter of support for SEK cap?
Thanks for having me today, I'm Casey Brown, the community engagement coordinator for C cap. I was coming in today to tell you guys a little bit about our Community Service Block Grant, that's our CSBG funding, that's actually the core funding that operates community action programs across the nation. It's a federal initiative that is designed to be alleviating poverty at local levels. The funding is handed down through state and tribal areas, and then to local community action agencies. C cap covers 12 counties in southeast Kansas, including Bourbon. Some of the initiatives that that supports is everything that C cap does right now. Our big one, if you guys are interested, and I'll leave these here, we have our Community Needs Assessment up, we are asking the communities for insight about their community, and we use these plans to actually tailor our responses using our CSBG funds and other funding that we receive, to help the members of our communities. All we're asking for today is a letter of support, I sent a draft letter to the clerk earlier last week, to give you guys a rundown of what this does right now through our housing program. We're housing 42 families, which is 68 individuals through our Section 8 TVRA programming. We have an early childhood education center here in Fort Scott, and we also have an early childhood education home visitation program. Seventeen kiddos attend our center, and 16 more receive at-home services. And then we have our BB Go Transportation, which provides a little over 1,000 rides a year, and is growing, so. Hoping in the next little while, we'll also be bringing weatherization back to this area. We're getting it started in a few of the counties, and we're hoping that that's able to grow, to help weatherize some of our communities as well, and help our friends and neighbors afford their homes a little better. If you guys have any questions.
At the moment? So do you have, or they sent the letter?
Yes, Susan has a letter here for the chairman to sign.
Oh, you can read it. Okay, I'll read it out loud, here we go. Dear community members and leaders, I'm writing to express my strong support for southeast Kansas CAPS impactful services, which are made possible through the Community Services Block Grant funding. SEK CAPS works in housing, early childhood education, transportation, weather, weatherization has significantly improved the lives of individuals and families in our community. Through its housing programs, SEK CAP has provided families with safe, affordable housing, helping them achieve stability. The Early Childhood Education Services ensures that children have access to quality learning opportunities, setting them on a path to success. Additionally, southeast Kansas CAPS transportation assistance has enabled individuals to access employment and essential services, while its weatherization efforts have helped families reduce energy costs and improve home comfort. The CSBG funding has been crucial in supporting southeast Kansas CAPS mission to lift families out of poverty and foster self-sufficiency. My strong support, southeast Kansas CAPS continued work in our community, and encourages ongoing support of this vital funding. Thank you for your consideration. Brandon Wisant, Chairman, Bourbon County Commission.
Sounds good to me.
You gotta make a motion for me to sign it. Oh, I make a motion that you sign this letter of agreement. Okay, I'll second it.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Wisant?
Yes.
I greatly appreciate your time this evening, and thank you.
Thank you. Department updates? Mr. Bailey? You go out the other door?
No, right there.
We're over here.
Yeah.
All right, make mine pretty quick. First, as a reminder, I don't know if you received an email or not, but our annual K-Dot meeting, District Four meeting, is this Thursday. If you didn't, there's agenda for that. If you think there's gonna be more than one commissioner there, you probably ought to make a motion, or...
I will not. From 8:00 to noon, on this Thursday?
It's at the district building.
Oh, it's Thursday, I can't go, I gotta work. Yeah, I'm unable to attend.
I'll be there, so we're, we're good there. The other deal we have is, after our road presentation, we went out, got you the price, if you so choose to do Maple Road, it'll be at the bottom there, District One, 2,092 feet, estimated at 30,170,25. So it just gives you something to think about before May 5th or 7th, whatever date that meeting is. Also, I did talk with Vernon County, and they are on board, if you so choose to select that project.
Did they have a timeline that they wanted it done?
Vernon?
Yeah.
As soon as we could, but they would work with us as well, so.
Okay. And that was, we'd do the work and they'd buy the material, right?
Right, and it's right at 5,000 for the asphalt. It's only like 285 feet, or something like that. It's one of them share, they own half the road, we own half the road, so.
Okay.
Next thing I have, just a heads up so you know, we will be closing Limestone tomorrow from 250 Fifth to 260th, to replace a culvert. Had a 24-inch galvanized culvert giveaway Friday, so we filled it with gravel so we could get through the weekend, but it literally is disintegrated and gone.
You said that was where?
That will be Limestone, 250 Fifth to 260th, and we'll notify all emergency personnel and get it on the radio as well in the morning, just kinda giving you a heads up.
Okay.
And then Wednesday, weather permitting, we'll be shutting down 195th, just south of 54, to Maple. We have, I don't remember, it's either 30 or 36-inch culvert. Water comes in the inlet, and goes down and comes out under the culvert on that outlet, so the culvert's rotted, so we need to get that replaced as well.
Okay.
So, just giving you a heads up on that, so that way if you have any, get any calls, you know what's taking place there with that. Quick update on Elm Creek, roofs are going on. The house is, I'd say a third of it on right now, get as much as we can this week, weather permitting. Mother Nature has not cooperated very well with the wind, but...
Yeah, I imagine that's bugger.
Todd Fox and, and his group of volunteers have done a good job out there getting that...
Very good.
Getting that going. We're gonna send a couple guys out tomorrow to see if we can help expedite things before the so-called rain that they're, they're calling for, so. We'll see what happens with that. As far as the windows and shutters or what have you, material's been delivered to the high school, and they're working on getting those built for us.
Oh, they are gonna build the windows?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, awesome.
Well...
Okay, that's my next question, I was gonna have to give me measurements for the windows, I was like chopping around.
Craig, Craig Campbell and his group is working on, on that, along with the high school construction trades department as well, so.
Okay, awesome.
Anyhow, that is about all I have. Anything for me?
Do you have, how's the safety committee coming?
Safety committee's coming along well. We are actually doing CPR and first aid training, starting tomorrow. EMS department out there is going to do training for us, 12 at a time is the max that they can, can handle, so we're gonna run three different times for training. K Works has reached out to us as well, I think you may have seen an email or two...
Yes.
Back and forth on that. We tried to, at our last meeting, we just had a meeting this last week, and we was gonna do a virtual meeting with them, but the individual had a situation come up, he was unable to be at our meeting. But our next meeting is scheduled for next month, and we are moving forward with the safety committee.
Have been, are we trying to make changes to safety rules and all that good stuff?
Absolutely, we're looking at, we actually have a notebook that we keep track of all our notes, and who's there, who's not there. Anytime you wanna see the notebook, it's here in Becky's office, be more than glad to share it with you.
Okay. Okay.
Each, each meeting, we try and pick a certain topic to go over and, and see what we need to...
What do you?
Improve on, or what, what we might need to, to do. And then we open it up in the committee, or go around to each committee member, see if they have anything they would like to bring up as well.
Okay. The job postings, you posted?
Mm-hmm.
Looking for a Class A driver?
Yes.
Looking for a mechanic?
Yes.
Looking for a general laborer?
Yes.
Are these all positions that have been vacated or...
Yep. We filled within, so...
So now you're filling the spots?
Now we're trying to fill those spots, which we may still be filling within, because I've had some interest internally in one of the positions, so we'll just keep filling until we get everything filled, but we've received several great applications, so.
Okay. Can we add another job posting?
I would like to add a scale house operator at the transfer station. Light trucks handling tickets, pick up trash when they're not busy.
Were we gonna have a discussion here on this? Okay. Where's that? I mean, I would have to see numbers and how that fits into this, you know, we'd have to make a budget amendment to the 2025 budget to bring them in now. I, I see the need out there, I've talked to individuals out there, and I, I see the need for, for more personnel out there, but, and again, you know, I wanna work on salaries with these positions that we, that we currently got, so I've been, I've been kinda working towards the 2026 budget, to see where we could start changing some of this stuff, but if we can find the money and make the amendment, I wouldn't be, be opposed to getting them some help out there, so.
Here's my thought on it, just so I'm transparent with you, it's been my thought since I've taken that over, we need to get the transfer station paid off, which is scheduled to be paid off next March or April, and we also have $235,000 that we have to have set back per the state of Kansas for reclamation. So, once, my plan is, or was, is once we have that, which hopefully that's next year, we put it in the 2026 budget, and move forward with that. That, that is, was my thought all along on the situation. I know that we're busy out there, we're very busy out there. But I think we can limp along and help out where we can, until we get to 2026. That's been our budget discussion plans all along, that's been discussed with the new individual out there that's running, before they took the plan, or before they took the position, so, but I will do whatever you instruct me to do.
I'd say, at this moment, we would need some figures from, from, and how that fits into this current budget, and then we can discuss it further from there.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
So, okay.
I mean, if it's feasible.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the math and figure it out, and see if we can squeeze it in.
Will I be in on those discussions?
If you, if you wanna be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, look, I know you...
If I'm over the department, I would like to be in on those discussions, because at the end of the day, I think it's gonna, I'm the one that's gonna have to answer.
It's the, it's, you know, you gotta look at the 2025 budget, that is, that's your budget.
Absolutely, and...
That's what I'm saying, we gotta...
Well, you really, you said amend it, you really can't amend the budget at this point, it's kinda too late, so you just have to decide if you have room within the budget for personnel, or maybe somebody left. I mean, you really can't amend the budget for 25 now, so the question would be whether you find the room. If you don't, then you find the room somewhere else, whether it's general fund or something else. I mean, counties always have money, just how do you wanna do it?
Well, I don't mean it like that, but...
No, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
If you think you need the position, you can find the money, but, yeah, you can't, it's too late to amend the budget.
Okay, right.
For 2025. That's all I'm saying.
No, that's why all my, I'm, I don't, you know, 2026 is what I'm looking at, that's the first opportunity that we have to make an impact on the budget.
Yeah, you're exactly right, yeah.
But if there is discussions, I would like to be in. But if there is discussions, I would like to be in on them. I think there may have already been some, but I haven't been in on them, so if I could be on them, that would be great.
I would too.
Yeah, and I'll crunch some numbers and I'll come talk to you.
Okay, perfect.
Maybe next week sometime, but...
Yeah, awesome.
Yep, nope, and, and so...
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. Tell the guys we're doing great.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Executive session, KSE seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one, to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. It will be for fifteen minutes, Mr. Michael Hoyt, and it'll be the two commissioners and council. And so fifteen minutes, we'll be back at six fifty-five. I need a second.
I second that motion.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Weizenhut?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, that's not even a question.